Everyone, I would like to call back to order the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners meeting of June 8th, 2021. A reminder to everyone, please sign us all electronic devices and mutual microphones. Now we will proceed with public hearing agenda, starting with ordinances. And then first is P-76.
Can we get proof?
Item P-76 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on May 26, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. David Goldstein, this is my item. It's, this is an ordinance by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners demanding Pasco County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Article 6, Division 3, to allow certain portions of the multimodal transportation fund to be transferred to the general fund, providing for other amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repealer, providing for severalability, providing for inclusion in the code, providing an effective date. Commissioners, this is an ordinance that was requested by the county administrator, and it's intended to create more flexibility in the use of the county's transportation tax increment funds. Currently, these funds can only be used exclusively from ability fee subsidies, transportation capital, and transportation operation and maintenance expenses. The proposed change would allow these funds to be transferred to the general fund for other public facilities and services to the extent they're not needed for mobility fee subsidies. The exact amount of this transfer would be determined yearly as part of the budget process. As some of you may know, the villages of Pasadena Hills has its own tax increment district that is currently also restricted to transportation-related costs. This proposed ordinance would also allow the VOPH tax increment funds to be used for non-transportation public facilities and services in VOPH. This proposed change was presented to the VOPH Planning and Policy Committee and the unanimously recommended approval of the change. So with that, we're recommending that you waive introduction and approve the ordinance by roll call vote, well, take public comment, and then approve the ordinance by roll call vote.
Okay. Madam Pluck, do we have anyone sign up to speak to this item?
I do not have the sign-in sheet. Do we have it? I do not have any emails for this item, and no one signed up for WebEx, but I'm looking to see if anyone is here in person. Thank you.
Item R-76.
No one is here for P-76.
Seeing no move or approval.
Wait, could we just verify there's nobody at the kiosk?
Is anybody at the kiosks?
There is nobody here at the kiosk for any items.
Thank you.
Second, and then discussion.
On the discussion.
Just a reminder that if we aren't able to pull off the transit solution for the Tampa Bay area, the BRT, we will need to put in our share of that money, so we need to keep an eye on, we don't know what that is yet, but there will be bill coming due, so just something to think about as we go.
T-Barley is even here in the next two months.
Yeah, well, if it doesn't leave here, there won't be some kind of transit.
Right, we would hope so, right.
Or else we'll keep funding everyone else.
Okay.
You're good.
No, you're off now.
Did you ask for public comment?
Any more?
No.
There you go.
Is anybody publicly here that did not sign up, would like to speak to this item? Seeing no one, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor by roll call vote.
District 2 Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
District 3 Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4 Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
District 5 Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 1 Chairman Oakley.
Aye. Motion passed 5-0. Next item is P-77. We have proof?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item P-77 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on April 21st, 2021.
Okay.
Good afternoon. Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. Item P-77 is PDD 21-0254. I'll read the item because it was actually advertised as a adoption hearing today, but there was an issue with the noticing, so in the overabundance of caution, we are asking that it be continued to the July 6, 2021, BCC at 1:30 in Dade City. David, should I read the item into record, and, because it was advertised as an adoption today, for today?
You don't have to read the ordinance title, we're not adopting today.
So we have to have a motion to do that?
Move to continue.
Second.
I think we need to call for, we can't take public comment either?
You say it was advertised as an adoption. Yeah, I mean, I think what Denise is pointing out is it wasn't noticed as a continuance, so if there was somebody that really wanted to speak today, they could, they just wouldn't be able to speak at the next meeting.
Right. Is anyone who wants to speak to this item? Do we have anyone signed up to speak to this item?
I have no one signed up on the sheet to speak to this item.
Okay.
Move to continue.
Second.
Okay, got a motion in a second. All those in favor by roll call vote.
District 2 Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
District 3 Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4 Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
District 5 Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 1 Chairman Oakley.
Aye. Motion passed 5-0. Next is P-78. Proof?
Item P-78 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on April 28th, 2021.
Item P-78 is PDD 21-0349. This is an ordinance demanding the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use maps map 2-15 and Sheet 23, changing from AT major attractors to RES 3 residential three dwelling units per gross acre on approximately 5.05 acres of property. Today, this is actually the adoption hearing on this item, and we're asking that you adopt the item by roll call vote.
Okay. Do we have anyone here to speak to this item? Do we have anyone signed up?
We have individuals signed up, but I believe they are probably with the applicant. Thank you. I have, I can give you the names. Mr. Joel Tool, Pat Gassaway, and Whitney Boger.
Okay.
Those are all applicants.
Oh, those are all applicants to speak. Okay.
Move to approve.
We're gonna wait for public comment.
We got a public comment, so having no one here to speak at this time, anyone here, I guess, speak against it?
For the record, Mr. Chair, we have no emails on this item.
No emails? Okay. Anyone in the kiosks?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, thank you.
There is nobody at the kiosk.
All right, thank you.
And, Mr. Chair, just for the record, also, no one on WebEx for this item.
Okay. No one on the WebEx, all right. So I have a motion in a second.
You do.
All those in favor by roll call vote.
District 2 Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
District 3 Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4 Commissioner Fitzpatrick. District 4 Commissioner Fitzpatrick, okay, came through. District 5 Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 1 Chairman Oakley.
Aye. Motion passed 5-0. Okay, move to, now we've moved to the public hearings.
Is I gonna do the procedure? Yeah, you can give your, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's two rezoning agendas, regular and consent. The staff will present each application to the Board of County Commissioners. If the staff or planning commission has recommended approval, and there's no opposition, the application will be considered by the board without further presentation. If the staff or planning commission has recommended denial, or there's their opposition to the application, the applicant will be given five minutes for presentation, the opposition will be given three minutes for each individual, or five minutes for a group representative, and the applicant will be given three minutes for rebuttal. Any individual disagreeing with the staff or planning commission recommendation, or anyone wishing to object to any condition of the rezoning, may at this time request that a petition be pulled from the consent agenda, in which case that application will be heard under the regular agenda later on during the meeting. Otherwise, all rezoning applications on the consent agenda will be approved by a single motion and vote. If you wish to speak to any petition, please give your name and address, and whether or not you've been sworn for the record. These are quasi-digital public hearings. The law in Florida is that mere public support or opposition of an application is insufficient for this board to take action. Please limit your comments to those criteria found within the board's Land and Development Code.
Okay. Do you have any proof?
I have, item P-79, I've not given the proof yet, it's published in the Tampa Bay Times on April 21st, 2021.
Swear, ma'am?
Yes, sir. If you are here to speak on the items in public hearing, if you could please stand and raise your right hand, and if you are hearing by WebEx, if you could do the same. Thank you. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, is anyone here to speak against this item? P-79?
So, Mr. Chair, I have, the applicant is online, so not against it, obviously, and let me look at here, I have probably also Barbara Willheim here, probably for the applicant as well, and that is all that I have signed up, and no one else on WebEx, no emails.
Okay. There's no one here to speak to this item, then we remain on consent?
Would you like to check the kiosk?
Oh, let me check the kiosks. Anyone in the kiosks?
There is nobody here for that item.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I read a correction into record on that agenda memo, please?
Okay.
Okay. So, this is PDD 21-0328 for a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment in the name of Wesley Chapel Lakes, and today's the, we're asking you to authorize transmittal to the Department of Environmental Economic Opportunity, I'm sorry, and other reviewing agencies. There is a typo on page 2 of 6. The project address should say at Meadow Point Boulevard, at the intersections of State Route 54, State Route 56, and Beardsley. One of my colleagues will be providing a corrected agenda memo to the clerk's office.
Do I need a motion correcting that? Move.
Is that page 3?
That is on page 2 of your, of your agenda.
On page 3.
I apologize. When I printed it, it gave me page 2.
Okay, so, just correction, for me, it's on page 3.
Okay. All right, so it's, I got a motion in a second. All those in favor by roll call vote.
District 2 Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
District 3 Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4 Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
District 5 Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 1 Chairman Oakley.
Aye. Motion passed 5-0. If there's no one here to speak against the item?
Commissioner Starkey, second.
Commissioner Starkey, I believe?
No.
No, he seconded it.
Oh, thank you. Commissioner Mariano seconded.
Okay, if there's no one here to speak against this item, then it remains on consent. P-80.
P-80.
Proof?
Item P-80 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on May 12th, 2021.
P-80 is UT 21-0358. It's a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, designating that area commonly referred to as Kirkland Drive as a street lighting service area for street lighting improvements, and to levy assessments against the property benefited by street lighting improvements in accordance with the Pasco County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 94, Article 2, Sections 94-46 through 94-56, and it comes here with a recommendation of approval.
Is anyone here to speak against this item? Is anyone at the kiosks to speak against this item? Do we have anyone with no WebEx or speak against this item?
There is nobody at the kiosk.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have someone, there's a question mark by it on P-80, if they're going to talk on P-80, which is Elizabeth Mancuso. I don't know if she's here in person, and she would like to say whether, is this the item that you'd like to speak on? P-80?
Are you, do you wish to speak against this item?
No.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Have no one, it remains on consent?
And I, just for the record, I have no emails and no one on WebEx.
No email and no WebEx, okay. It remains on consent. P-81.
Item P-81 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on April 28th, 2021.
P-81 is PDD 21-0371. It's a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment, CPAL 2013. This is the transmittal hearing of it. It's a transmittal, the proposed Complan Text Amendment to Subarea Policy Flu 7.1.34 Fort King Ranch, and renaming the subarea to Palmetto Ridge, updating the future land use map 2-9 and subarea map 2-934 Fort King Ranch to depict name change. And today, this is the transmittal, so we're asking you to authorize transmittal to the DEO and other reviewing agencies.
Okay. Do you have anyone signed up? Is there anyone here to speak against this item? Is anyone at the kiosks to speak against this item?
There is nobody at the kiosk.
No, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have no emails on this, and there's no one on WebEx for it, and the only individuals that are signed up are with the applicant.
Move to approve the consent items.
It remains on consent.
I have a question on this, just real fast.
Okay.
Second, second, and then discussion.
Okay.
I just want to be sure that there's right-of-way being donated for State Route 52 from this property. Here comes Terry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nictaros Pito's Planning and Development Department. So, there would be right-of-way dedicated for State Route 52 on the north side from Palmetto Ridge.
That's where this project's at.
Yeah, that would be handled during the MPUD stage of the project.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Have a motion in a second by roll call vote.
District 2 Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
District 3 Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4 Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
District 5 Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 1 Chairman Oakley.
Aye. And that's for the consent agenda items, P-78, P-70, or, P-79, P-7, or 80, and P-81. Next item. P-82.
Item P-82 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on March 10th, 2021.
Item P-82, I would like to note that this item does have ex parte communications with Commissioner Oakley, Starkey, Moore, Fitzpatrick, and Mariano. PDD 21-7528, in the name of Stephen Siller Tunnel to Towers/Parkway Boulevard, it is a rezoning from a PUD planned unit development district to an R-4 high-density residential The subject site is located on the south side of Parkway Boulevard, approximately a half a mile east of Aaron Cut Off. The site is currently undeveloped and contains approximately 75.15 acres. The owner slash applicant proposes to develop the site in conformance with the R-4 high-density residential district standards. The property owner wishes to develop the site for the community's Foundations III programs, the Gold Star Family Home Program, the Smart Home Program, and the Fallen First Responders Home Program. The surrounding area is characterized by residential development. The subject site has a future land use classification of RES 3 residential three dwelling units per acre under the Comprehensive Plan. The applicant, the applicant has volunteered a deed restriction to limit the number of total lots, install a six-foot-high fence along Panther's Run subdivision, and Dupree Lake subdivision, limit the number of lots located along Panther's Run to a total of nine lots, including six lots being with 100-foot width along Panther's Run subdivision. This proposed deed restriction was not the same deed restriction that was reviewed by the planning commission. This will be a look at the conceptual site plan with the proposed deed restrictions. And then the next slide will be Exhibit B from the deed restrictions, which would be the, a conceptual of what the deed restrictions will look alike along Panther's Run subdivision. The surrounding zoning to the north and east is MPUD, and to the south and west is MPUD and PUD. The future land use classification to the north and east is RES 3, and to the south and west is RES 3 and RES 6. And then access to the site is from Parkway Boulevard. And this is coming with a recommendation for approval from Planning and Development Department, and as stated before, Planning Commission made a recommendation of denial, but they had a different deed restriction presented to them.
Okay. All right. That's all I was, you speak for the applicant?
I am, sorry, yes. Good afternoon, Commissioner.
Give us your name, and also state if you've been sworn in or not.
Sure. My name is Matthew Mahoney. I'm the Executive Vice President of Stephen Siller Tunnel to Towers Foundation, and I've been sworn in this morning, this afternoon. We have a presentation, if we're able to pull that up. So, as I said, I'm here to represent the applicant, the Stephen Siller Tunnel to Towers Foundation. You can go to the next slide, please. I won't run through this whole thing, but we're, we're in our 20th year, we were created after the September 11th attacks in New York City, and we're named in honor of fallen fighter-fighter Stephen Siller. Stephen, that day, was a hero among heroes, we like to say. When the tower was attacked, Stephen, who himself, when he was a child, was orphaned at the age of nine and 10, and raised by his siblings, left five children at home that day to respond to the attacks of the World Trade Center. He finished his shift, he was on his way home, he did not have to go report, but he turned his vehicle around, headed to the Brooklyn Battery Tunnel, which connects Brooklyn to Lower Manhattan, and not being able to take his personal vehicle through, because of the emergency, Stephen donned over 60 pounds of firefighting gear on his back and ran over two miles to the World Trade Center, ultimately losing his life that day at the South Tower, leaving behind five small children. He was one of 343 firefighters we lost, a total of 406 first responders that day. Next slide. In response to Stephen's death, this foundation has carried out 20 years of doing good, as we like to say, and we have four primary programs we run, three of which will be exhibited here in Pasco County. The Smart Home Program, we deliver mortgage-free homes, custom-built to our nation's most catastrophically wounded veterans that come back from the war against terror. These are individually tailored to their needs. Our Fallen First Responder Program, where fallen first responders, police officers, and firefighters from all over the country participate in this program. When they leave behind small children, and they lose their life, do their duties, we pay off the mortgage of those homes. If they do not have a home, we will buy them a home, anywhere in the country they'd like. Our Gold Star Program works much the same way. When we have a member of the military service on active duty who's killed anywhere in the world, they leave behind small children, we will either pay off the mortgage of their home if they have it, or build them a home. By the end of this year, we would have built or paid off over 400 homes. Our last program is the Never Forget Program. That's our annual run-walk series, the closest we have to Landa Lakes would be over in Orlando. We have about 3, 4,000 people participate. The New York City race typically has about 40,000-plus people that participate in that race every year. We will, this morning, we announced at the World Trade Center, we will be doing the race again this year after COVID, and also, we announced that we are going to be paying off the mortgages of the firefighters and police officers who responded to the World Trade Center who are dying of 9/11 illness. So this morning alone, we added about another 65 families to our list. Next page. Here in Pasco County, we've, we've already built one of our Smart Homes in 2019 for Sergeant First Class Anthony Kenworthy, right here on Landa Lakes in 2019. He was a former Green Beret who was severely disabled, thanks to his service in the military. Next slide. So, the Let Us Do Good Village, which is what we are calling our development, is a community created by our foundation, which is going to bring these families together. There's no greater support system for these soldiers who have given so much, and their families, as well as all the widows of Gold Star families and Fallen First Responders, than to be together. We bring them together throughout the year, at different times, and we see that bonding. Some of them have really become like family to one another. And creating a village where their children, especially their children, are going to be able to grow up in a community where other children don't have a dad, or other children don't have a mom because of their service, is going to do a lot to help those families recover. Our Smart Home, Gold Star, and Fallen First Responder recipients will be gifted these homes mortgage-free. They will choose from three to four designs that'll best suit them, so it's not going to all be cookie-cutter homes. This is a sample, a couple of the pictures of some of the homes that we've built. The Smart Homes will be on larger, 100-foot square lots, 100-foot lots, and it gives you a real sense of what we do. You can go to the next slide. Here are a couple of the other homes which we've built. The homes will look different. They will have landscaping. One of our great partners is The Home Depot. They come in, and Team Home Depot does a lot of landscaping for us. We make them look as beautiful as we can. As mentioned in the deed restriction, we're going to put a six-foot fence along the Panther Run subdivision. We're also going to do that to the south of the property as well, too. We're also going to do plantings. We have, there'll be a tree planting requirement, we'll plant those in the backyards, too, for extra privacy, and we commit to doing that. We don't know what the numbers will be yet, based on, you know, how many trees we take down. But we want to ensure privacy both for our neighbors, and of course, for our widows and children. We want them to have privacy as well, too. I'd like to bring up, you can go to the next slide, Cynthia Tarapini, who's working with us, and she can describe any of the issues here with the deed restriction.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be back here in person with you today, and a real honor to be representing the Stephen Siller Tunnel to Towers Foundation. Mr. Mahoney has described the mission of the foundation. I'd like to talk a little bit about the rezoning criteria, and then specifically about the deed restriction. As you can see in the slide, the neighborhood will have 103 lots. There will all be single-family detached homes, no townhouses, no apartments, no villas. The density is about two units an acre, well within our planned category of three units an acre. We are specifically not requesting a plan amendment for this site. We'll have two entrances on Parkway Boulevard, as you can see where the little pink dots are. The southern one is the main entrance, and next to that main entrance will be our community center, neighborhood park, clubhouse, and amenity area for the residents. There's a lot more information about our compliance with the rezoning criteria and our narrative, and I'll refer you to that, and I'm happy to answer any questions on that. But I'd like to spend a few minutes talking about the deed restrictions and walk through that, and specifically in detail with you. But I also want to say that prior to our first public hearing before the planning commission back in April, we had several individual conversations, and then a conference call with the residents of Panther Run, which is immediately to the west of the site. We've continued to correspond with them through this process, and when we revised the deed restriction, that is before you today, we sent it to the county on May 26th, we sent it to our neighbors on May 27th, so that they would have it as well. So let's just walk through the, if we go to the next slide, please. This exhibit is in the deed restriction. It is attached and made a part of that deed restriction, and our commitments are both in the language of the deed restriction and on this exhibit, but I just want to walk through each one specifically. So in Panther Run, it's a little hard to see because they're light, but along the western edge, there are four lots, and there are three lots along that northwest edge within Panther Run, so a total of seven lots in Panther Run. The deed restriction will restrict our project to nine lots and nine homes in the same area. And you can see, they are colored, the green lots are the 100-foot-wide lots for the, for the disabled veterans, the yellow lots are the 60-foot lots. But you can also see that not only have we reduced the number of lots, but we have placed those larger 100-foot-wide lots directly next to the existing homes in Panther Run. So every, each large lot is next to the existing home in Panther Run. There are three of the lots that are 60-foot-wide lots, as I mentioned before, and they are in yellow, and again, they're focused away from the edges of the development. Since all, since the 100-foot-wide lots will be the homes for the disabled veterans, and all of those homes will be one-story, therefore, the 100-foot-wide lots, the yellow, excuse me, the green lots will all be one-story next to Panther Run. This was a specific request by the Panther Run residents. There are three areas along this edge, these two edges, that are not going to be developed, so they're kind of shown in the hatched green. There's one right at the entrance, a second one kind of in the middle of the western boundary, and another one along, in the middle of the northern boundary. Those areas will only be, will not be allowed to be developed with homes, they can only be developed with park, open space, and/or drainage. As Matt mentioned, we've also committed to install a six-foot solid fence along the edges of our property, that's shown in dark blue on the exhibit. And we're also putting a fence, although it's not shown on this exhibit, but it is in the language, we are putting a six-foot fence along the southern edge of our property, next to Dupree Lakes. In summary, we believe the application meets all the criteria for rezoning, the staff has recommended approval, and the foundation has made significant commitments along that common border with Panther Run to address their concerns. We believe we've gone above and beyond in our efforts to be good neighbors. On behalf of the Stephen Siller Tunnel to Towers Foundation, I respectfully request your approval of this rezoning. your approval of this rezoning. With your support, the foundation will create the first village anywhere in the United States, right here in Pasco County, specifically designed for disabled veterans and surviving spouses. Thank you very much, and I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
Mr. Chairman, I just, one question. Mr. Mahoney, we had a conversation last, I think it was last week, right?
I think we did, yes, sir.
Time's on my side, last week. But I also had the pleasure of having a conversation with one of the neighboring residents, Ms. Carrero, yesterday as well, and I followed back up with you afterwards. Just want to make sure, you mentioned it, Mr. Mahoney, and Cindy, you just didn't mention it in your conversation, but one of the concerns was, too, about the trees, and you mentioned you would be putting trees. Can you tell us how many right now, because obviously the full site plan hasn't been completed? But I just wanted you to reiterate, there will be trees on the other side of the fence, too, on your property-
Yes, sir.
-to help buffer even more.
Yes, sir, those would be put on our property. So the idea would be to, you know, we had this conversation with the residents as well way, over a month ago, and that idea kind of came up and blossomed out of those conversations. We want privacy for ourselves, they want privacy for their property. We're happy to accommodate that, so the plantings that we need to do on those properties, we'll put them on our side of the fence, sort of in the backyard of our homes, so that they provide some sort of additional shield.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to reiterate that.
Of course.
Thanks. And I appreciate, and I do, and I obviously always appreciate talking to residents. I don't know if anybody here is in the audience today or not, but I appreciate, obviously, everything that you guys are doing when it comes to our veterans and our first responders. I did have the pleasure of attending the event back in 2019, and wow, what he's doing, or what your organization has done for these people is remarkable, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mariano? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I want to say I thank you for coming before the board with such a great project. And I also want to thank you, the detail that you spent, from your listening to the residents from the get-go, the changes you made. Put that picture back up. It shows clearly where the houses are coming in, Lot 1, Lot 2. You put a park right behind that.
Yes, sir.
Still putting a fence in there. On Lot 4, you've gone through and put the park there as well, or drainage, and kept everything one-story, the whole thing. So it is a residential three area, a res-three area, that I think you're making yourself fit in there real well, and with the project you've got, I think you'll find the board probably excited about what's coming up to help our veterans, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, thank you. You all have done a good job in answering the public and the neighbors of that project, so it looks very good. But this is a public hearing, so-
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Starkey has a question.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, and I also met with applicants, and I met with some of the residents, I think I see them here today, and great, great project. I'm very, very proud that we're going to have this in our county. Actually, just returned from a military ceremony where my son-in-law took command of the squadron in Fairchild Air Force Base, and I mentioned this at the party afterwards to a whole group of our military, and they thought it was really awesome that someone was doing something like this for them and their families.
Happy to hear that.
Thank you very much. I am kind of noticing, I'm actually on the property appraisers map, and I'm on one of the lots here, I don't know if you all have gone and looked, I've never been in the subdivision, it looks like beautiful homes, the one that's existing, but they've built right to the property line. There's some, there's the structure right on the property line. I don't know, I don't know how they got to do that, but I'm very appreciative of what you've done here. I think you've gone over and above what we should ask a neighboring residential community to do to another residential community. You didn't have to do this, but we thank you very much, and I'm looking forward to voting on this project.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, one more thing before we do public comment.
Okay.
No, no. And do me a favor, we got to see, obviously, how things go for the public hearing, but connect with Pasco County Schools, if you would. I think they would like to work with you on some things, some ideas, and Mr. Gad, Assistant Superintendent, is in the audience today, if you guys can make that connection.
Absolutely.
And he can actually make that connection for you, but if you would, he's right behind you. There's some things that you guys could probably partner on.
Love to.
I did have one more question. When I met with you the first time, you had an amenity package, and I see now you've added this park space, so did that change your amenity package any?
No, what we're planning to build for the recreation center, no, it will not change. It'll be in addition to it. I imagine it to be very passive recreational parkland.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
I don't want to-
I was just hoping you'd have to get rid of your clubhouse.
Oh, no, not at all, no, not at all. I also don't want to build anything noisy next to the neighbors as well, so I imagine leaving that as pretty open parkland.
And I just want to add, with the addition of the three park areas along that edge, and the amenity center that we were doing all along at the entrance, we're now at triple the amount of required park open space. We're at about 3.7 acres estimated, so we, you know, we're really trying to make this project something that not only will fit in with the neighbors, as we've talked about, but that will provide all those wonderful, small recreational opportunities for the residents.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead. She can take it.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Patrick, I would just like to say thank you to the developers as well, and thank you for the residents to come in ahead of time, and the developers for updating on projects and moving on as well, because it's nice to see all the collaboration, everyone working together. And I do have family that work for New York City, who have the results in law enforcement, so it means a lot.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, because we don't have any ex-party forms for this matter in the file, I know that Commissioner Moore and Commissioner Starkey already announced who they met with, but anybody else who met with the applicant or the residents, could you please state that now, so we can get it on the record, that you had those ex-party meetings? Because there's no forms in our packet, so-
All right, I've met with the applicant myself and a neighbor of this property, so.
Mr. Chairman, I've met with the applicant as well as one of the residents. I thought we had the form set in, so.
There's none in the packet.
Okay, so.
I told you I met with the applicant and the resident as well, and that we should have that there.
And just to confirm, we did submit all of the meetings that we had as the applicant with the commissioners, we did submit those to the project planner, so they are in the official file.
Yeah, okay.
I was just texting my staff.
Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing, and do we have-
We'll get those to the clerk, because they were received today, just to let you know. That's why they weren't in the packet.
Okay. All right, thank you.
But Liam did read that into record, that they were expat communications.
I understand, but the forms have more detail than what Liam stated.
We have them.
Okay.
We'll get them to the clerk today.
Can we just get the board to receive and file the ex-party forms now while we're on the topic?
Move, receive and file.
Second.
Okay, got a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye by row call vote.
District 2, Commissioner Moore. District 3, Commissioner Starkey. Aye. District 4, Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
District 5, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 1, Chairman Oakley.
Aye, most past 5:00.
Not yet. He was just about getting to-
I'm still waiting.
All this stuff, of course. On the horns.
I'm trying to get to public comment, but we had a lot of good information before we get to public comment. So, do we have anyone sign to speak here today?
We do. We also have someone on WebEx. I have no emails.
Okay.
What would you like to do first, Mr. Chairman?
Let's hear the person on WebEx first.
All right.
Anna Fenton Sworn.
Okay. Ms. Sabrina Fernandez, you are on WebEx. If you could please state your name, address, and state that you have been sworn in, and then we may begin your comments.
Okay. My name is Sabrina Fernandez. I reside at 22402 Panther Run Court in Land O' Lakes, and I have been sworn in.
Thank you.
I'd like to say the address to the commissioners and to thank you for allowing me to speak today. I just wanted first to reiterate that I, along with my neighbors, have always expressed support of the Tunnel to Towers Foundation's cause and this project overall. The new deed restrictions and conceptual plan are much improved from what was originally given to us, so I would like to think the foundation worked efforts to make it less of an impact for us. I've read the zoning stuff, I've learned a lot through this process, and I know that we're definitely not a high-density R4 neighborhood, so I do appreciate what they're trying to do along the edge of our property, and I understand that some of this doesn't have to be done, but to do that R4 zoning, that's definitely not in line with what our community is. We have more rural fields in our community. If anyone's taking a rebel getaway of pathing or what, that's one of the reasons I bought my home in this community. I know that they've offered to put up a six-foot fence and trees, but there's no guarantee that those trees have to remain there. It's not in a D. I would really like to have a guarantee of some sort of a buffer, because, like I said, we've been in this community for quite some time. This is new, it's going to be an empty area regardless of the properties that are against ours. It would be nice to have some guarantee of a buffer for that six-foot fence. Also, I live along the western edge of the property, which is near Lots 10, 11, and 12, and a few weeks ago, just after the, either the first or second meeting we had about this, they had a servant come out, and some of those areas weren't initially going to be developed, and there's a very rural area that floods during the rainy season, so I just want to make them aware that this can definitely be a flood issue, and there's been property added around this edge. It's been more now tucked into our community as basis for our arrival. And so Lot 10 is above, Lot 10 is going to be a two-story home that does overlook my property, just so you know. It's a two-story home, and it does definitely overlook my property there. It's halfway in the lot, so I would really ask them to only do it one-story there as well, if they can. And I just want to thank the developers again for working with us, and the county commissioners for hearing us out today, so thank you for your time.
All right, thank you for your comments.
Okay, that's someone's person?
Yep, we have two people signed up, but I don't know if that has captured everyone that is here. So we have Mr. Joe Clavon.
Hello, I would just speak, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. And I also have signed up Trina, is it Van Nostrand?
Yes.
As you approach the branch, I would just remind you, if you could please state your name, address for the record, and also whether you've been sworn.
My name is Trina Van Nostrand. I live at 22430 Panther Run Court in Land O' Lakes. I have not been sworn in.
Okay. Would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. You may proceed.
My concern basically is what my neighbor was talking about, and that's with the R4 density, the high density that they're requesting, when the rural area, there is no other developments that are allowed, R4 density, and that's our biggest concern. I do live on the western side, and my property floods already when we have heavy rains. My whole backyard on the back end, which I have a 20-foot drainage easement in my yard that I can't even do anything with, 20 foot of my yard on that whole backside, and like, when it does rain, I flood back there. They go building these homes and stuff, I'm going to end up with more problems than I've had in the past. When I put in a pool, my, the elevation was so low that I literally had to bring my patio up two foot. So my six-foot fence is, when I'm on my patio, is like a three- or four-foot fence, because my patio sits so high, so I literally can see over the whole fence and that whole back area, in which they're going to be able to see into my patio area, and I'll have no privacy. Right now, when I look out, at least I'm just looking at the cul-de-sac and a couple of houses in my subdivision, which is their front yard, so it's not like somebody's backyard, which these will be people's backyards, which they will be occupying a lot more, and like I said, I won't have any privacy at all. I have, there's two 60-foot lots, so two that's going to be two-story homes, that with the way the angle of that is, we'll be able to look in and see right over. And like I said, when I'm standing on my patio where my pool area is, I'm looking right over my fence. So this is my biggest concern right now, and I would just, I appreciate what they're doing. I'm from the military family, and I really do appreciate it. I just wish they would go more with the R3 instead of R4 density, if you would just, you know, have them approve for just an R3 instead of R4. Thank you.
So I'm looking at your lot here, and is that your garage that's in the front?
No.
Is that your garage, so are you, what was your address?
22430.
Is your name Trina?
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm looking at your lot, and it looks to me like you've chosen to put your house further back than your neighbors. I mean, it's pretty far back on your lot, so that-
Well, I didn't build the home.
Well, whoever. Whoever signed-
I bought the home, but I didn't build the home.
It's definitely pushed back to the back part of your lot, so I think, you know, that's going to be a risk when you, when someone chooses to site a house so far back like that.
I'm not really certain what you're talking about, but like I said, I added on the patio.
Like my commissioners do, so.
I mean, I added on the patio, so that brought it out a little bit more.
Sure.
My garage faces the west. It's-
Right.
-on the side of the home.
Her house is all-
And-
And the garage is up there.
So I did add on that patio, but like I said, with the elevation, I had to, you know, bring the whole patio up, so like I said, I won't have privacy.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you for comments.
I would pass some trees. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, that is all that I had signed up, but I don't know if there's anyone else in the audience who-
Does anyone in the audience wish to speak for this matter? Come forward.
Just as a reminder, name and address for the record, and state whether you've been sworn.
Hi, my name is Shelby Carrero, and I live at 6448 Paul Place. I have not been sworn in.
If you would please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to thank the county commissioners for meeting with me over the course of the last two weeks. I appreciate that. I also want to thank Tunnel to Towers Foundation. They have worked with us for several months now, and I think that we have finally come up with a compromise on both sides, and I greatly, greatly appreciate that, and again, to mimic all my other neighbors, I think that we couldn't ask for better neighbors for what you guys are doing, and we are excited to see what they're going to do. So thank you, and thank you, guys. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is anyone at the kiosks? No emails?
There's no man at the kiosk for that item.
All right, thank you.
And no emails on this item.
What else? Okay. Pleasure for?
CNN, move the pool.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye by row call vote.
District 2, Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
District 3, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
District 5, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 1, Chairman Oakley.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Okay. P-83.
Item P-83 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on February 17th, 2021.
Before I get started, I do have an updated subarea policy that was, as of last Friday, there is one more revision, and I'll read it directly once I walk through my presentation Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item P-210290 is a comprehensive plan text amendment in the name of CPAL 2014, Central Pasco Employment Village. Next slide. The proposal is to amend subarea policy 7.1.12 as a text amendment, and the location of this is on the south side of State 52 between Coggar Parkway Extension and Bellamy Brothers Boulevard. Next slide. We, in researching and in reviewing the proposed amendments to the subarea policy, we've looked at these policies that are in the comprehensive plan itself, 7.1.12, as well as the central market area, which is policy flu 8.1.3. We also looked at the EC employment center future land use and the con conservation future land use. Next slide. This is the location of the Central Pasco Employment Village. It's right in the middle of Pasco County in the central market area. Next slide. This is the conceptual master plan for the Central Pasco Employment Village. Really quick to walk through the colors for everyone. The target businesses, corporate business park and land industrial are the purple colors. The red colors are the commercial. The yellow color is the corporate business park specifically. And then the brown, orange, and peach colors there that you see are the residential designations, high residential, medium residential, and low residential respectively. There's also a collector road network that is established within Central Pasco Employment Village. Next slide. This map is illustrating that the entire employment village is within the EC employment center future land use. Next slide. And this slide is illustrating that much of CPEV is AC zoning currently. Next slide. So, to sum up what has actually changed within the subarea policy, there are six changes that have taken, six major changes that have taken place, five of which I've outlined on the slide, and I'll get to the sixth one. But, we've established EC, an EC sites initiative, an employment center sites initiative. It was previously discussed at the LPA, as well as in the agenda memo, as a service-ready sites, but not any longer in the subarea policy. The subarea policy is discussed as the EC sites, and these are intended to ensure the availability of sites for employment uses with supporting infrastructure that's designed, permitted, and constructed in place to accommodate employment uses. The next big change in the subarea policy amendments is to authorize the increase in the single-family residential cap to 50%, taking it up from 20%. So, 2,250 units of the total 4,500 can be single-family residential per this proposal. The third major change is to remove the Department of Community Affairs mandate on affordable housing, which would be consistent with the elimination of similar provisions in other projects. The fourth major change is to enable a case-by-case MPUD level review to determine appropriate timing and placement of school board facilities. The fifth major change is to enable an exchange of entitlements between CPEV landowners and tracts by mutual consent, and allow the master plan to administratively be revised accordingly. This one needs a little bit of explanation, as it wasn't quite talked about at the LPA. Originally, the CPEV was designed to have one main MPUD for the entire area. About two years ago in 2019, that was changed to enable multiple MPUDs to happen within Central Pasco Employment Village. When it was one MPUD, a single land use equivalency matrix could provide for the exchanges that might take place within the planning area. But when it all went down to multiple MPUDs, each MPUD would have its own land use equivalency matrix that was not necessarily communicating with the other land use equivalency matrices that were, that could be established in other MPUDs. This provision basically restores, goes back to the original concept that enables landowners and tracts to be able to make exchanges in their entitlements and in their designations. The sixth point that's not on my slide is the addition and requirement for mandatory notice to CPEV landowners and a mandatory neighborhood meeting to each individual MPUD application process, and to review the proposed CPV entitlement allocations for each MPUD or EC MPUD. And this is essentially to ensure a fair proportion of allocations take place amidst discussion with all property owners within CPEV. I mentioned that there was a recent revision to the subarea policy that's not in the copies that I just provided, as it came very recently. So, it would be in policy provision A10, A dot 10, and I'll read it into the record for the sake of the public hearing here today. At the time of MPUD and/or EC MPUD rezoning, CPEV landowners are authorized to exchange land use designations between CPEV landowners if requested by such CPEV landowners. The total overall entitlements and the allocation thereof for non-residential and residential entitlements approved for CPEV shall not be exceeded in the aggregate. The CPEV master concept plan shall be administratively revised with each approval of a MPUD or EC MPUD without further plan amendment being required for such concept plan revisions. In order to ensure that individual MPUD or EC MPUD applications in CPEV do not utilize the disproportionate amounts of the aggregate non-residential or residential entitlements, each MPUD or EC MPUD applicant in CPEV shall be required to conduct a neighborhood meeting and provide written notice of such meeting to the school board and to every owner of vacant land in CPEV that is greater than 10 acres in size regardless of distance. Such written notice shall include, A, the residential and non-residential entitlements being requested in the specific MPUD or EC MPUD application; B, the percentage of the aggregate residential and non-residential entitlements being utilized by the specific MPUD or EC MPUD application; and C, the remaining available residential and non-residential entitlements in CPEV if the MPUD or EC MPUD is approved. So, having read that, pending the board's pleasure, I can add that into the subarea policy, and then that would be included in the transmittal to DEO. Next slide. The Planning and Development Department is recommending that the Board of County Commissioners authorize the transmittal to DEO and other reviewing agencies of the proposed comprehensive plan amendment for Central Pasco Employment Village, providing for a text amendment to subarea policy 7.1.12. And that completes my presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before the applicant comes up, can I just ask a couple of questions?
Okay, come back, Terry. Excuse me. You want us to have a discussion before an applicant comes?
So, Terry, from what you just read, if the landowners agree to change the uses, it's gonna affect that map a bit.
Yes.
Are you comfortable with allowing that happen in case those purple areas are gonna be closer to the red, or residential areas coming in too close to the industrial? Are you worried about how that may play out?
Well, the map would have to, the provision states that the map can be administratively reviewed and approved, so we would be able to see how those exchanges are taking place.
Didn't have to go public hearing, but the staff will look at it?
Yes.
Okay.
And then we would recreate the map, and everybody would be on, continue to be on the same page.
So, staff's still in control where it goes from there? And if the people don't like it, they can come back to the board anyway?
Yes.
Okay. On the allocations, as far as now moving the residential, single-family up to 50%, I'm okay if that number goes up to as far as 75%. I mean, I don't, I'm not limited to holding that number there, and that would give them more flexibility in case they wanted to go that way. I don't know how the rest of the board may feel.
I'd be careful about putting too much residential, because then you end up with smaller lots.
Aye.
We want to keep those communities growing and looking good, and we want builders and developers to come and have landscaping and architectural views and be a community builder, not just a house builder. So, I think that's very important, keep that in mind as we go forward, because I think we're going actually, not because of anything that's necessarily done, but there's some consequences to what we've been doing, and I'll give you a couple of answers that I got the last couple of weeks. One person was having a hard time because he couldn't get a riding mower from the front yard to the backyard, and that's a very small lot and a very, it keeps him from taking care of his home. And the other one was the fact about a guy who wanted to paint his house, but the only way to paint his house was a ladder. He puts the foot of the ladder on his neighbor's property to be able to paint his house, and the neighbor says, "No, you can't put it on my property." So, we didn't mean for that to be happening, but we want to make sure that we have good community neighborhoods for the Pasco County, and that's the way it needs to look in the future, and not continue just building houses, so...
Can I also make a comment? You may want to hear from Mr. Cronin before you make that change, because I know he has thoughts about locating industrial uses next to single-family, and he may have some concerns with that before you make that change.
I have some questions, if we're doing them now, and then Mr. Two can answer them too. First of all, I know it's too late for this, but I gotta tell you, this commissioner has a problem that we're, that we're saying, "No, you don't have to do affordable housing." It used to be when you had a DRI, 10% of the housing in a large community had to be affordable, and now we don't require it anymore. Do we collect any money to go into affordable housing pot somewhere? I mean, that's gonna be a problem, that we don't have that kind of housing around the county. You see that in Monroe County where the property values got so high. All the teachers have to live in Dade County, and they get bussed in. I mean, we need to have workforce housing, and that's not the same as an apartment, because many of those apartments, they can't afford to live in those apartments. My next question is dividing up the entitlements. Are the entitlements divided up per acre? Say, if you have 100 acres, you get, or say 10% of the project, do you get 10% of the industrial, 10% of the housing? How do you, how do the entitlements get divided and shifted?
Well, I think, if I may go back really quick for the, on the affordable housing point. The current subarea policy doesn't mandate affordable housing.
I know, I read it.
Yeah.
Just 'cause...
It says to provide a strategy for...
Yeah.
So, it doesn't preclude us from continuing to do affordable housing, it's just that provision itself has been removed from this project in the same way that it's been removed in other projects.
That was kind of a statement of a warning, you know, we're gonna run into trouble if we keep saying we don't require it. We need to have some kind of affordable housing strategy.
Can I just add to what Terry said? The issue isn't staff agrees with you, but we have not been uniform in our application of affordable housing reform.
Right, I'm aware, we took it out.
We removed it, we removed it for some, most of the ones that have come in, we've removed that requirement since DRIs went away.
Right.
So, the strategy when we adopted the wire grass DRI was we were supposed to do a countywide affordable housing ordinance, but we never did it.
Well, we need to do it, that's kind of what I'm saying.
I agree with you, I'm saying, I think even developers would agree with you, that that's what needs to be done, as opposed to applying it on a piecemeal, case-by-case basis.
And I would say, when you allow for ADUs, additional dwelling units, you also take care of part of that problem, and you should be, we're working on that. Okay, so what about entitlement distribution?
So, the entitlement distribution is sort of handled by that A10 provision that I just read. The intent being that there is a continuous discussion among the property owners in terms of how those entitlements get laid out throughout CPEV. One of the, one of the original challenges with CPEV is that the land use designations that you saw on the master concept plan don't necessarily line up with ownership or, you know, property lines, et cetera, within CPEV. So, the distribution of those designations has been a challenge for the area. However, through continual conversation and through the MPUD process itself, you can begin to establish a fair allocation appropriation, because everybody will know who's getting what, when, and how. And they can also make those exchanges in the entitlements.
So, before, so if a landowner A and landowner B each have their allotment of entitlements, and they want to swap them, they can mutually swap them?
They can come to an agreement and then work with the county, amend the concept plan, as Commissioner Mariano pointed out, and yes, they'll be able to adjust in order to make it fit.
But they can't take away landowner C's entitlements.
Right.
It isn't the first one in gets to pick the entitlements they want.
No, you still have to abide by the master concept plan itself. You can make adjustments to the concept plan, but you can't just, it's not a free-for-all to say, "I'm gonna take all of these," because...
And I just want to make sure everyone understands that, because I think there are some that don't understand that, and I thought that's the way it was working.
So, Commissioner Starkey, I just want to make sure you got a clear answer there. There is no initial allocation of entitlements occurring here. There's an aggregate number of entitlements for CPEV, but there's no, we're not, staff is not allocating entitlements to particular property owners at this time. That is done through the, subsequently through the MPUD process. It is somewhat first come, first served, however, there's, as Terry read into the record, a requirement that every time one of those comes in, they have to notice every single vacant landowner in CPEV to make sure they're not taking too many entitlements. So, those other landowners can object if anybody comes in and tries to take too many of the aggregate entitlements.
Because some people may not want to develop their property, they may want to enjoy it, and I don't think we want to have to push someone to develop before...
Well, it doesn't require, it doesn't push them to develop, it just, they would have to object though if they think somebody's taking too many entitlements.
Okay, and then one other question I had was about the roads. So, how will, how will building the roads be spread out? I mean, if so, if you're the last one to develop, is it possible you could get stuck with a large road bill?
Do you want me to try and answer that for you, Terry?
Sure.
Typically, that's negotiated through the MPUD process, but as a general rule, each MPUD is gonna have to build the part of the infrastructure needed for that MPUD. So, if, for example, I think there's a major east-west road that goes through the middle of this entire project, as each development comes in, they're gonna have to build their portion of that roadway, or some of the north-south roadways, they're gonna have to build their portion. Now, whether that's mobility fee creditable or not is something we negotiate through the MPUD process, but that's all handled later through the MPUD process.
Okay, those are the questions that I wanted to be sure.
Well, I think if we go ahead with the...
People had understanding.
If we'll go ahead with the applicant and go through in the public hearing, I think a lot of these questions will be answered, and we'll go forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, Joel, to and associates, I represent the Swope family. They're the owners of a large tract in the center, really almost dead center of CPEV. I'm going to be very brief. I requested additional time, but I'm going to reserve most of that in case there are questions or any public comment to respond. I do wish to introduce six letters into the record. Four are from the four largest landowners in CPEV. I have a letter from the Coca-Lacas family, the Southworth family, the Aprili family, and the Swope family. These four families own about 80%, 8-0% of all the land in CPEV. So, although you hardly ever get 100% of people to agree on anything, we clearly have the support for this plan amendment from, from the vast majority of the landowners. I also have two letters from employment center brokers who've been very active in Pasco County and who have tried to market property in CPEV, offering their support for this approach for requiring the infrastructure to support the employment sites. I think you saw these letters, they were provided to the planning commission, but they basically are encouraging you to approve this plan amendment so that the infrastructure can be brought in. They do believe that this location is marketable if there's infrastructure available for these pad-ready sites.
Motion to the file.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion second, by roll call vote?
District 2, Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
District 3, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Fitzpatrick. District 5, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 1, Chairman Oakley.
Aye, motion passed 5-0.
Thank you, and Mr. Chairman, just to...
You have been sworn, I didn't know if you stated that.
I have been sworn. And just, just to briefly summarize, I want to thank several people. I believe that in my 42 years, I hate to say, of doing this for a living, and that's as of this week, I don't think I've ever had to work any harder on a plan amendment. We might have worked harder on a DRI or a large MPUD zoning, but, but not on a plan amendment that I've been involved in. But I want to thank the Planning and Development Department, particularly Terry Pito's Administrator Biles, Mr. Cronin for EDC, and all the landowners that have been involved in supporting the plan amendment, and also Lenar Holmes, who's been instrumental, because they are the proposed developer for three or four of these major landowners, who would be the ones constructing this infrastructure to serve the employment sites, if we're able to get the business deal together. That proposed business deal is contingent on this plan amendment approval. If we can get this approved and transmitted, then we can roll up our sleeves and get busy documenting the final terms for those business arrangements. The applicant and the four landowners whose letters I submitted, who again, as I said, control 80% of this land, they support and agree with 100% of the terms of the text amendments, as the PDD staff has now read into the record. So, we have no qualm with any of those, we agree 100% with them. We have addressed, we believe in a reasonable fashion, the concerns expressed by Mr. Cronin for EDC. We think we've been responsive to those. We also do have an executed memorandum of understanding between Southworth, Coca-Lacas, and Swope to actually proceed in good faith with MPUD approvals that would implement the exchange of land use designations to facilitate an even larger employment center location toward the eastern end of the property where utilities are more readily available, and therefore a better chance of landing users sooner rather than later. So, God willing, and if we get this transmitted, I think we can move forward now with a path toward a solution. Again, I know there are always some people that aren't happy. Everyone has their own agenda, they have their own concerns, they have their own goals and objectives, but I think on balance, if the goal of the county is to get this large employment center in a very strategic location off the ground, we firmly believe that that goal is supported by this plan amendment. And then my final comment is I know there was remaining angst, which has been discussed today, about how are we going to divvy up the entitlements? And then my final comment is I know there was remaining angst, which has been discussed today, about how are we going to divvy up the entitlements? And as I pointed out when that question was raised recently, this is not the first time that we've had to deal with that. If you think about it, in VOPH, we have dealt with that for twelve years now because this is exactly the same concept. Each VOPH village has an aggregate number of entitlements for the village as a whole. When we file each individual MPUD, we have to have that neighborhood meeting. We show how many of the entitlements we propose to use, which explain how much developable land we have on, on that parcel compared to the whole village. And we demonstrate to those landowners that it is a reasonable request, that that applicant is not taking more than their proportionate share. And of course, what's a proportionate share depends on a number of factors. What, where is your location in that master plan? Some of these master plan areas, some of these property owners have almost a hundred percent employment center. Some of them have, you know, very little employment center and more residential because we have wellhead protection, we have a wildlife quarter, so this, this, this plan was thought out originally. So, you can't just say, well, each acre gets X entitlements because some locations are limited to low-density residential because they're adjacent to the wildlife quarter, or they're adjacent to the wellfield. On the other hand, some people get huge amounts of employment center entitlements, and rightfully so. So what we're saying is we'll provide those notices, we'll invite everyone to the party, we'll invite the school board to the party, I'll buy the beer and popcorn, and, and, and we'll say, this is what we're proposing, here's why it makes sense, what do you think? Now, in my experience of doing over a dozen VOPH MPUDs, we've had one MPUD in VOPH where we actually had to bring that discussion to this podium for the board to resolve. One is all. In every other circumstance, we ultimately were able to get everyone to agree that what that applicant was requesting was a reasonable proportion based upon where they were, how many wetlands they did or didn't have, and what the master plan provided. So I am confident that if we roll up our sleeves and do the same thing we've done at VOPH, we will get there at CPEV. It may get a lot easier than you would think if these three or four large property owners in fact do a consolidated deal. You may, you may have one large MPUD in here pretty soon that addresses eighty percent of these issues and would make everyone's life easier. So, we urge you to please see fit to transmit this. We're glad we've worked it out, at least we think we've worked it out, I guess I'll find out now, thank you.
Thank you. We have someone signed up.
We do have a few individuals signed up, no emails. And we, the only person on WebEx for this item is additional individuals that are with the applicant. And I have a couple of individuals that signed up that are also for the applicant. So I assume Mr. Two spoke for the applicant, and if anyone else, I can go through the others. For public comment, if that's okay.
Okay.
Okay. So we have Andy Scaglioni. Would you like to approach? And just as a reminder, if you could state your name and address and whether you've been sworn. Thank you.
Andy Joe Scaglioni, thirty-eight oh two, Erlich Road, Tampa, Florida, three-three-six-two-four. I have been, I raised my hand last, thank you, and good afternoon. I, I am here to support this, but I wanna put on the record that I have two big concerns. And then I think that'll be more or less covered when, when the, the MPUD comes forward at that time. And I'll go into those at the end. At this point, what made me feel comfortable is three people. Bill Cronin, he knocked it out of the park with this user he's got going in. So that means all the triggers that were in place, they're no longer an issue. So, great job. And Pasco County's lucky to have him. Number two, was talking with infrastructure, Mike Bella back there, where he went over with me with the synergies of, of the project across the street. The old, now it's called the, what is it? Yeah, I know it as the Pruitt Ranch, you know, years ago. And anyway, with that happening, both of them, there's a lot of synergies with the sewer and water, and we're gonna get, utilities are gonna come there with the, the two projects. So, thank you, Mike brings a lot from the private sector and, and has got a great reputation among the, in the industry. Third of all, probably in thirty-five years, the most knowledgeable talent, talented county attorney you have here. And thank you very much. You made me feel very comfortable, you got a great reputation as a straight shooter. And, and with the language that was put in with section A-ten that, that, that was just read, that they have to have a neighborhood meeting about the entitlements, that, that makes me feel a lot better. So there's two concerns I have. Number one is-
You still have a minute.
That we get quality over quantity in this, this, in the CPEV. It deserves, Pasco County deserves it, and we don't need to give the farm away. This is, this is quality property, okay? And so that we get quality over quantity again. And the other issue is that the entitlements don't get all globbed up where if I, I'm not ready to do something, that when the time comes, that, that I have something there for my family. And, and being the last, one of the last people standing, that their problems, when they're far down the line cashed out, become my problems. And that, that's a real concern for me. For instance, the creek, I have a creek in my property, well, am I gonna have to build a bridge over that creek because I'm the last person standing? These are concerns I have when everybody else is cashed out. Thank you very, very much, okay?
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
The next person who has signed up is Sam Rodriguez. As you approach, I would just remind you your name, address, and state whether you've been sworn for the record.
My name is Sam Rodriguez. Twenty-three, eight, forty-six, State Road fifty-two, Pasco County, Land O' Lakes.
And have you been sworn, sir? Did you swear?
Yeah.
You did?
I did.
Okay, go ahead.
You know, my concern is, I'm west of the Aaron cutoff, and all this development is happening to the east. I own a go-kart racing facility there that provides a lot of entertainment for a lot of people. And obviously, we comply with all the noise ordinances, everybody has to run a muffler. And my concern is that houses, if they start building too many homes in fifty-foot lots and they're really close, there are so many people around there that a little bit of noise, you're gonna get complaints. I think it's gonna impact in time. I'm afraid it's gonna also impact the value of my property if we have to shut the facility down. And those, those are big concerns for me. And that's what I wanted to re- eridiate to you guys today. And hopefully there's some consideration, like Andy said before me, quality before quantity. I think that's really important. Obviously, the more homes you build, it's gonna impact roads, it's gonna impact infrastructure, everything. And I think that could be a big concern not only for us but the county. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you for comments.
Thank you.
The next person signed up is Nathan Granera.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, Nathan Granera, reside at two-six-four-three-zero, State Road fifty-two, I have been sworn in. So my concern is with entitlement distribution as- Commissioner, Commissioner Starky reiterated already. I ask that the entitlements be proportionally to the size of the development that is going on. What I don't want to see, as Mr. Scaglioni already previously stated, is the problems backflow into us because we don't decide it well. That is it.
Thank you for your comments.
And the next person signed up is Joe, is it Papel?
Hello, Commissioner Stark, I'm Joe Papella, neighbor of Mr. Scaglioni. I think he said it all, y'all have addressed a lot of our issues. And we know we're on the growth pattern here, so we just want it done right. And I've enjoyed it for thirty years, wanna enjoy it for some more. My kids are living out there, and we're concerned, I think, with a at first it sounded different, sounds better now, so, thank you.
Sir, did you state your address for the record?
Yes. I'm twenty-three, one-thirty-two, I'm right on the creek.
And you, and you were sworn in.
State, I did that already.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And the only other person that I have is Mr. Gad, I don't know if he wanted to say something?
Yeah, I think he does.
Okay.
He's gonna remember this time, though.
Ray Gad, seventy-two, twenty-seven, US Highway forty-one, Land O' Lakes, Florida. Not here to object to anything in the proposal, but I just wanted to take this opportunity to share with you, you know, some issues that the school board runs into. And the relationship that the school board has with this county commission is nothing short of miraculous. What we have here is very unique. And back in two thousand and two, when I first took the job at this level with the district, we had no surplus land. And we went about the business of aggressively pursuing surplus land, and the county, often with David Goldstein's help, we were able to develop policy that ensured that the school board had land to build schools. But I wanna bring up a point that Mr. Two brought up. By the way, I've been haggling with him for years, he's never brought popcorn or beer. But I wanna bring up the VOPH because the VOPH is a good example of, of a good strategy. If you look at the VOPH, there are colored marks on the VOPH plan where schools are supposed to go. And although VOPH was compared as the same as CPEV, it's not the same for schools. We have very different ideas in VOPH about how we go about getting school sites. And recently, we've been able to work with the Evans family, we secured a school site without any problems there. We worked with another group of the Evans family, no problem securing school, school sites. We worked with the Price family, no problem securing school sites. The first landowner that objected to us having a particular school site hired Mr. Two, who came in and, in classic Joel Two fashion, huffed and puffed for a couple hours about why we couldn't have that school site, and we relinquished it, we didn't need it anymore. And Mr. Two's not the first land use attorney or developer or builder that was upset with the school board's need for a piece of land. But in this particular development, there is no definite way for us to get land other than addressing it at every MPUD that comes to the county commission. We just ask that going forward, you maintain the same relationship that you've had with us in the past, and that we make sure that the school board secures school sites in this evolving corridor. Thank you very much.
No, I have a question.
Also, I just need, for the record, Mr. Gad, if you could state that you were sworn in.
Oh, I was sworn in, thank you.
Yeah, so that, so how will that work, Ray? Come back up. So, let's just say hypothetically, Andy's the last one to build. Andy, I have no idea how much land you have there, two, two hundred acres, did you say? And, and so, so there's no school site, and you say, okay, we have to have a school site, it's gonna be on Andy's property. That you would buy it, or does it have to be donated?
Well, we're happy to do either, first of all, no one, no one, no one ever, no one ever donates land to the school board, that is extremely rare, by the way.
Sometimes they do.
They, they make land available for us to buy. And so we either do that in cash or we do it in credits.
Okay.
So the way it would work now is, as each MPUD came in, we would make a decision about whether or not we wanted to ask for a school site in that MPUD.
Yeah, but if you don't have-
But it could reach, it could reach the point where, you know, we, the first MPUD, the second one, the third one, and then it could fall on Andy. And at the end of the day, we're back here in front of the county commission pleading for help so that we can get a school site in that particular area.
So, I mean, I could, is it possible that someone has two hundred acres, you need fifty-something acres for a high school?
Oh, no, actually, in this particular village, we probably need no more than twenty-five cuz we're gonna build like a high school academy is the tenet to plan, and Mr. Two's aware of that, I believe. And, and it wouldn't necessarily come from the Swope family, I mean, we haven't made that assessment. I'm just, all I'm doing here today, I'm not complaining about what's going on, I'm just making it clear to the county commission that we still need your help in the CPEV when we come in here and ask for a school site. And if there's resistance from a developer or builder, we need your assistance to make that happen.
But, so each, each residential site will pay a school impact fee. So that's how part of the cost is spread amongst everybody. I just, I just don't, I, I'm dealing with a developer who was the last man standing in a piece, I won't say where. And everyone else got the entitlements, and they're left with a pretty tough bag of rules they have to follow. I still wanna see that to happen again. And so I'm just feeling for the last man in. I just want them to be protected.
And we don't wanna see that happen either cuz we don't wanna have to deal with the last man standing, so.
So Commissioner Starky, the language of CPEV, which was carefully crafted by Chris Williams, Angel Two, does say as each individual MPUD comes in, they can take into account the needs of the entire CPEV. So, it's not, you're not looking at just the needs of that individual MPUD. So if the second one in looks like they need a school site for the needs of the entire CPEV, the school board can request that school site. So it's not, they're not looking just at what that individual MPUD needs in terms of school, they're looking at all of CPEV. In addition, Mr. Gad requested that when they have these neighborhood meetings to discuss entitlements, that the school board have a representative there so that they can warn those, those landowners, hey, if you're gonna take X amount of residential entitlements, it's probably gonna come with a school site. That's the reason he requested to be at that meeting. So we're trying to avoid what you just-
Yeah, I'm just, just putting it out there that I don't want the last man's you kinda, you said in a way, the last one in is kind of left.
There is that possibility, but we're doing everything we can to avoid that.
Okay, well, I wanna make sure we're doing all we can to avoid that.
Mr. Moore?
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate everybody that came up and spoke today. And I did have quite a few concerns prior to, you know, today's meeting and the things, and the changes that were made. I did watch the both planning commission meetings, had obviously conversations with, with a number of people. So I appreciate everybody collaborating and getting together on this. Even though it's the last hour, you got here, right? I, I, but I do, a couple of things I agree on, and I do have concerns over, which we're not gonna figure out today. But when it comes to the entitlements, it's been, already, it was previously mentioned, I spoke with a, with a gentleman that is close to Aaron cutoff, you know, pretty far away from, obviously, this project. This is a gentleman that had an idea for some, a project some time ago, you know, maybe a couple of years ago, did not move forward with it because of some opposition in the area with some neighbors. And he has something I would assume is gonna come to us at some point here in the very near future. And I just wanna, you know, I, I think about that, this is, this is a small landowner, this person doesn't have many acres. But we wanna make sure he gets the best use out of it, and he has a great plan, which I think everybody in the community will support. But I, I do wanna make sure that through this process and reviewing each one, in each one of these MPUDs, whether it's next month or it's ten years down the road, everybody's on the same page. Cuz not each one of, we're not all gonna be here ten or fifteen or twenty years from now. I mean, maybe, maybe you all will, I'm not. But, but, but the same with staff, and David may not be here, and Dan might not be here, the land use attorneys may not be here that are, that are present today, some of the landowners may have, the land may have changed hands. So what happens ten or fifteen, twenty years down the road? Is everybody gonna get it? Is everybody gonna understand what we did here today? Is Terry gonna be here ten or twenty years down the road? We don't know that. So I just wanna make sure that going forward, how we go about this, I mean, this is ironclad, right? That we're not gonna come back six months, two years, three years from now and try to make changes once again. I wanna feel confident that today is the day. What was decided today is what's gonna be, we're gonna be moving forward with, so we are on the same page. And that's a big concern. Listen, we know how it works. What we do today, somebody may come fires, five years, five years from now and wanna change the rules again. We don't need that to happen anymore. Stick to the guns, stick to our guns. Now, when it comes to employment sites, obviously, we know it's very important. And, and I, and I do commend Bill and his team, and, and obviously, some of the landowners have already participated as well, right? You already have some projects coming in. I don't think you're gonna make an announcement today, but we know there are things coming that will be, I'm sure it'll be announced in the very near future, that we're excited about. And when it comes to the schools, you know, that is very important to us. So, you know, there's a good chance whoever's representing the landowners on this first MPUD that comes in, in front of us, I have a sneaky suspicion we're gonna pop school sites that day. Because we can't wait, we can't wait till the last person standing. Because I will tell you what'll happen, that land will be so valuable, the school board will be able to afford it.
Right.
And that, right? I mean, that's, that's the reality of it. So, we need to be very conscious of this moving forward. When these MPUDs start coming in front of us, we can't wait till the last minute to help the school board and work a deal with the landowners and, and the represent, represent, the representation to help get that deal done. More homes, more students. And what happens when you have students without schools? You're going through the redistricting process once again, and you'll probably go through it again two years later after that. So, we gotta be very conscious of that. But let's think, remember, let's think about each and every one of the people that are in the audience today. Stick to their guns, make sure this is ironclad, make sure everybody knows what's going on moving forward.
Commissioner Starkey?
I have, I have two more things. One, this is a large piece of land, and I think it's really commendable how everyone's come together to, to do this together. But I think it needs a name. I, I'm hoping it's not gonna call the CPEV. So, I hope you can get consensus with all the landowners that it has a name. And then it could be, you know, the Scaglioni Ranch Act, something, something. But, but, no, I'm just saying that just because you have a whole name doesn't mean you can't go ahead and name your own neighborhood within a master... I'd like you to treat it like a master planned community, like Bexley, like Starkey, like, you know, like some of those. I wish we had more like that, some of the little piecemeal ones that we're getting. And I think you have an opportunity to brand this and to name this. So, I just put on your thinking cap on that one. And most importantly, there's a very important trail coming up the back of this property.
They said there's no trails, there's no trails in there.
And it's called the Orange Belt Trail. And it, looking at, I'm here on the property appraiser site, and it's touching a lot of people's property. And, you know, that's, that needs to happen in a very good way. And make sure that all the neighborhoods have access to this trail that's coming from Trinity to the Woods Lakoochee State Trail sooner than you think. So, just had to get my trail two pieces in.
Commissioner Mariano?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ray, when you talk about the schools, as far as what we're gonna do, you know, this is called the Central Pasco Employment Village. I mean, that's a pretty strong name, I think. And I think when we first designed this, I went to the largest table I'd ever been from Pat Gasaway's place, looking, looking this thing over, and with all the landowners there. And I think if we can work, and Ray, however you feel, if there's a vocational component, especially something can be taught into there to go, I think you could probably get some acceptance and, and some traction, and maybe even some federal or state funding to help fund that, as a, as a one-of-a-kind place. I know AM Skills is doing a phenomenal job, getting federal monies, state monies. They may be able to help something. I was thinking of Flagship right on fifty-two coming in to say, okay, here it's coming. And then if a big industrial place wanted to take it over, they can take AM Skills and go move it back to some other place. So, I, I think there's some opportunities there, and I think, you know, working with our state legislators, even federal, let's, let's start working on that now, because that could be a catalyst for the rest of it, to go out and do what we want, create jobs, create a quality of life, and, and really, I think, be a big staple for this whole development. So, you know, Pat, I want to say, you know, from way back when, putting this whole thing together and, and working with all the landowners that have been, you know, together, trying to find the right things to do, you know, Joel as well, so I, I think we got a really good thing going here, that we can keep on elevating.
All right, thank you. Is anyone at the kiosks?
Mr. Chairman?
Hold on just a minute, hold on just a minute. Anyone at the kiosks?
There's nobody at the kiosks.
All right, thank you, all right. Ms. Fitzpatrick?
Yes, Ellen, are there any proposed sites on the P V?
Not yet, no.
Are there any specific proposed school sites? Are there any areas on that land specifically that would be the area for a school location?
Maybe you can answer that.
Joel Two again. The discussion I've had with Ray and Chris Williams was the possibility of doing this technical high school somewhere possibly north of our primary east-west road. The caveat there is we've got to coordinate that with the school district and Mr. Cronin, because most of that area is designated an employment center. Not that you couldn't create a symbiotic relationship and make it productive. The other alternative, what the school district historically has done to save money, is to try to find lower-density residential land, as Commissioner Moore pointed out, that the price is more affordable, and go there. We have enough acreage that I think the school district actually will have their choice there. I mean, there are probably some of these low-density residential owners that would be more than happy, now that the state statute says that they have to be paid fair market value by the school district to sell. And as Ray pointed out, once we got on a fair market value basis in VOPH, we've had virtually no problem getting those school sites committed. So, the short answer is none yet, and the reason there's none yet is, again, the project directly across State Road Fifty-two on the north, Palmetto Ridge, that you did the transmetal today, Mr. Gasaway and I also represent that property owner, we're doing that MPUD modification now. We've agreed with the school district, originally, that project only had an elementary school site. We've agreed to add a middle school site. So, he now will have a commitment for elementary and middle directly across fifty-two from CPEV. That's why his comment was, what I've discussed with Chris Williams, is the possibility of a smaller footprint specialized high school in CPEV, which will give us all three levels right there in one location. So, we do think we have it covered, and at every single MPUD, the school district will have the option to say, okay, we, we need the capacity now, or we're okay until the next one. And that was, that was the theory, is look at them one at a time, because you're not gonna know what your demand is until each one comes forward, and he can look at his capacity figures in that district. But we're confident that we'll be able to solve it and keep it flexible. But we clearly understand that somewhere in CPEV, there's going to need to be another school. I mean, every, everyone understands that. And lastly, just for the record, since Mr. Gad was being so kind to me, the same guy is the one that got him three elementary schools, a middle school, and a high school at Wiregrass Ranch, is getting him a elementary, middle school, and high school at Two Rivers, that got him most of those VOPH schools. And, you know, I had to tell him once, no, and he's still sore about it. But I will, I will buy the beer and the popcorn, and hopefully, he'll eventually get over it. Thank you.
Ray would like to rebut that.
I, I don't have any rebuttal to that, but I, I did want to comment, because Mr. Two makes a good point, that we usually try to identify sites before the students are generally there. And when we identify those sites, we, we want to cut a deal either for credits or cash at the time that we identify the site. And one of the things that often happens to us with developers is they say, okay, here's your site, but we'll sell it to you when you need it. And so, as we're waiting for the students to come in and the homes to be built, and then all the entitlements are issued, and the land is developed, then we're paying an incredibly high price for a piece of land. So, just a, a little point that I wanted to make there.
Okay. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak?
You just, you have to lock in the price. Lock in the price, and then take, then take it later, right?
Bill Cronin, Pasco EDC, I have not been sworn.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God?
I do. So, I, I just wanted to share a little, a little history on this particular site and where we're at. And this particular site is probably one of the most complicated agreements that were out there. And we did make Mr. Two work very hard, as well as many others that, both on staff and outside of that. One of the coolest things about CPEV, though, was that there was a triggering provision that said you can't build houses, or at least this many houses, until there was so much industrial that was put in place. It was genius, because the idea was to make sure that residential never outpaced industrial. And I'm happy to say, though, that we do now have at least one project that has triggered that number at well over five-hundred thousand square feet. And another landowner that, thanks to this provision, as far as the MOU and trading entitlements, will be able to expand that industrial so that the eastern side of CPEV will be a large industrial site. That is the side closest to I-75, closest to the utilities, will save the county a lot of money, will also keep the truck traffic closer to the interstate where they want to be. It also will allow those, those landowners to be able to trade the entitlements so that the residential is in one area, the industrial is in another. This is not a typical MPUD where we just have the live, work, play, where we wait and the very last piece ends up to be industrial, and the price is usually way too high at that point to get industrial. This is one that the industrial's coming first, and I think everyone was pleasantly surprised that the industrial was coming first, to the point that, that, that staging or phasing is a moot point now, at, at that level. So, we don't need necessarily to wait for the industry, we've got the industry coming. We are getting down in the weeds in some of the other things. I think there was a fear that with this text amendment, that we were gonna end up just letting everybody get every entitlement that was out there in the process. And what you heard tonight is that that MPUD process, it's gonna be, it's gonna behoove all of us to be really focused on making sure that we mine the little bit of land that we've got left in Pasco County. And that those MPUD processes, as they come forward to you, it's imperative that at that point, we no longer are, that we're, we're being transparent about who's getting what at that time. Today's may not be that day, but that's gonna be the point where it's gonna get really busy. And I think we're, we're all gonna be very engaged in it, and I'm really happy with the level of engagement on this particular piece. I hope that everybody will stick with it in the years coming up, because those MPUD hearings and those neighborhood meetings are gonna be really, really important. But again, thanks to, to David Goldstein, and, and also to Mr. Two in working together to come to a conclusion with the language that's gonna work for everybody and get us down to where we need to be and get the development moving.
Thanks. Mr. Chairman, just to your point that you said about the forty-foot lot, I think, I think, just as a general statement, we don't want to see that there's only, the only residential are forty-foot lots. We would like to see a mixture. This is large enough that we should have all kinds of sizes of lots. But it does concern me that the last man standing's gonna, his hand's gonna be tied a little bit. So, it seems like everyone needs to come in for the MPUDs all at the same time, and just hash it out.
I think, I think staff will have a blast with that, if, if they all come in parallel at the same time.
But we don't want any...
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman? Phil, I'd say I want to thank you for your getting involved and getting your input in there. Since you've come to Pasco County, you have done a phenomenal job every step of the way. I mean, from years, years ago, talking about the overpass business park on I-75, where I talked about the spray field, et cetera, and you picked up on that one conversation, took a look at it, and then we have a tremendous facility going on now. Your effect of this facility has been sitting for so long, waiting for something to go, and working on something to make it happen, has been a, a great asset to the county. So, keep up the good work, thanks for working with everybody around you, appreciate it. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Is anyone else here to speak today to the item? Seeing no one, and no one's at the kiosks? No, we don't have any.
Can I just clarify, does that include the amended languages written in the record by Mr. Petos?
Yes.
Okay.
And it includes that they're gonna name it something. Gotta name it? I don't know, just need one...
So, I've got a motion, and I gotta say, and all those in favors, aye with a roll call vote?
District two, Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
District three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District four, Commissioner Fitzpatrick. District five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District one, Chairman Oakley.
Aye. Motion passed five-zero. Okay, next item. P eighty-four. Thank you, thank all of you for the work you've done to get to this point.
Mr. Chair, I have proof for item P eighty-four. It was published in the Tampa Bay Times, March tenth, twenty-twenty-one.
Good afternoon, everybody, Tammy Snyder, Planning and Development. We have again for you the Life Church MPUD Master Planned Unit Development, PDD twenty-one, seventy-five, zero, four. Next slide, please. I'm just gonna go over this quickly, since you've all already seen this presentation. Proposed is a zoning request from AR Agricultural Residential Zoning District to an MPUD to allow one-hundred-twenty-two single-family detached residential units on approximately forty-one-point-eight acres. Next slide. Here is their master plan. Next slide. As you may remember, they are requesting some LDC variations, the neighborhood park landscaping, they want it interior to the park rather than just around the perimeter. They were requesting to reduce the park acreage, and I did find out yesterday from the applicant's representative, they are willing to produce the one-point-two-two acres. They're going, they would like to pay into the sidewalk fund in lieu of construction of the sidewalk, seeing as how its Old Pasco Road widening project is already underway. And the allowance of an additional ten-foot lane at the entrance for emergency access, and the LDC does allow for such. Next slide, please. The planning commission heard the item at the April twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one meeting, voted to recommend approval with amended and added conditions of approval. And the added condition of approval was to fence the stormwater ponds. The BCC heard the item at the May eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one meeting. The applicant had attended virtually, and there were technical difficulties. And since the BCC had questions, they voted to continue the item to today, June eighth, twenty-twenty-one. Some of the questions were the timeline of Old Pasco Road construction, was there a proposed trail on Old Pasco Road, the approximate number of additional schoolchildren from this development, and the size of the proposed neighborhood park was in question, but now it's gonna be the LDC requirement. Next, next slide. So, we did go ahead and gather some additional information for you. The design of Old Pasco Road does begin this summer with a proposed completion at the end of twenty-twenty-three. And the typical roadway section for this portion of Old Pasco does contain a twelve-foot multi-use path and a six-foot sidewalk, in addition to bike lanes on both sides of the road. And the school board indicated that the number of new students in the system would be twenty-two elementary, twelve middle school, and fifteen high school students. There was also concern about the proposed pond fencing, and clarification regarding pond slopes, and Commissioner Mariano said he wanted the full park acreage. Next slide. This slide came from project management, and this depicts Old Pasco Road, the timing of improvements, and what sort of improvements are being proposed. And directly adjacent to this project is the green there, and it's going to be designed this summer, gonna start construction immediately after, because they don't need to require any additional right-of-way for this piece of the project. Next slide. And here is the typical roadway section. You can see that there is a twelve-foot multi-use path on one side, a six-foot sidewalk on the other, two bike lanes, and all that will be included in the roadway. Next slide. And it is consistent with the Pasco County LDC and the... And it is consistent with the Pasco County LDC and the applicable provisions of a comprehensive plan. Next slide. And with that, we recommend approval with conditions.
Can I ask one question?
Go ahead.
Tammy, so just to be clear, the applicant has withdrawn their request for the variation for the neighborhood park?
Size, correct.
So if the board moves approval, they need to accept out that change?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can you put that road section back up? This is just for our planning department, I guess. I sure, you know, we saved that 10 feet for the bike lanes there. And to me, it would be so much better if we took some of that space and added it to where the multi-use path is, make that so it's not a straight linear experience, pushed up against the road, no landscaping, because no one's riding in those bike lanes. I mean, maybe out in Dade City, but you've got that on State Road 54 everywhere. No one's used, very rarely do you see that being used. So I wish we could take that space and do something different with it. The next thing is, for me to approve this project, it's going to require a tree in front of every house, not in the back, in the front. Not a, not a queen palm. No, we don't. And until they fix the landscape ordinance, I have to say this, at every MPUD. And so, because right now, they can put the tree in the backyard, then you have what I showed you, that road with nothing, looks like parts of Baltimore that I visited 30 years ago, and people cut down their tree, and then they have nothing. So I'd like an amendment that every house will have a shade tree in front of it. At least one. And my concern with the fence was I didn't want a fence around that. Yeah. And the slopes were fine to not have to have a fence around that.
Right. So it is in your power to deny that?
Yeah. So I want to deny the fence and add a tree. Every lot.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, one of my concerns, the last time, which has been one of my concerns for some time, has been the widening of Old Pasco. I think some of the citizens have heard, we talked about it, too. So the timing on this section should either coincide or be in advance of probably when I would assume they've completed construction or not as much, well, I guess we could say construction, of their entire development. Is that true, Mr. Miles, what we talked about earlier?
You'll award the design contract next week, the goal is to get under construction 12 months from now.
Okay. I think they said there's about a two-year project, probably, or so, to get completed. See, it's not, okay. Because that's a small section, shouldn't take that long to construct, as long as you use the right contractors. Right, that aren't backed up.
The road should be in before they leave the house.
It'll be the lowest responsive bidder.
Yeah, I know. That's what I meant, as long as it's the.
Mr. Chairman?
It's a crapshoot.
Mr. Chairman?
Can I clarify?
Mr. Mariano?
Thank you. Commissioner Moore, I was talking to Mr. Miles earlier last week when I drove Old Pasco Road close to the fire station.
Yep.
On the opposite side of the road, there's like a development going there.
Yeah.
It looks like the drain is like right next to the road. Do we have room, do you know?
Yes, sir. We verified that we have room. That was verified with Planning and Engineering Services.
Okay, perfect. All right, good. So I'm glad to see you guys have had the 1.2 acres. I understand all the right-of-way you gave us to make sure we had all the room for Old Pasco Roads. We appreciate your working with us from the get-go on that. I will tell you, as far as the trees go, I don't care whether it's a palm tree or a shade tree, because frankly, if I had to pick my tree, I'd want to have a palm instead of just a shade tree. But if you want to be flexible with that, and they're flexible with that, I'm good with it.
Well, if it's not a queen palm, which is a palm that attracts rats and roaches, and they're so cheap, and, yeah, they're not good. Oh, well, then let's you and me drive around and look at all the houses that have put one queen palm in the front. So no queen palms. I'll take you over to Mitchell Ranch.
Mr. Miles? Well, I'd like to clarify the fence comment. I think what you would like is that they comply with the Land Development Code with respect to fencing around stormwater ponds.
What I want is what they want, which is no fence.
Well, if they design it with a slope that is flat enough where it's not required for the Land Development Code, they wouldn't put a fence there.
Well, we have, we have, there's a fence on Massachusetts that has no slope, and the pond is fenced, and it's nasty.
Let the Land Development Code rules whether or not they need a fence. Because of slope requirement.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I agree with Commissioner Starkey on that, too, because it's, to me, it's like added value for the community as well. I mean, you have a pond, and eventually, there's going to be fish in there, and people gather around it, they can, they can fish, and, you know.
Collect guppies.
Yeah. What'd you call it? What'd you say?
Collect guppies.
Oh, no, there's big bass on those ponds.
Do have a.
Oh, huge.
Yeah, we've got monster bass.
Yeah, they'll eventually get there. They find the way.
There's African here. Would you like to speak?
Brad Tippett with Planning Development. I just wanted to clarify that last comment. Is the request to allow them to deviate from the Land Development Code, if the Land Development Code would require a fence, if the slope is 4 to 1, and they require a fence normally?
They need to slope it correctly so it doesn't require a fence.
Yes. Okay, so as long as they slope it in a different manner.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
It's more like a waiting palm. Most people don't know that one these days.
Shelley Johnson, 6400 Madison Street, Newport, Florida. Yes, 6400 Madison Street, Newport, Florida. And I have been sworn, and I'm happy to answer any questions. We're fine with those changes. Requiring the trees in the front, as well as.
You had, as you're approaching, you were saying your name, you have to say it at the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It's Shelley Johnson.
Thank you.
And I have been sworn.
Yes.
So we are good with those revisions, and we would like to not have the fence around the pond, and we can do the sloping, you know, comply with the Land Development Code. So we're good with that.
Perfect.
But we're happy to answer any questions. We have our whole team here, so.
Wait for the public comment.
Is anyone at the kiosks on this item?
There is nobody at the kiosks on this item.
All right, thank you. Do you have anyone signed up?
The only individual signed up is Valerie Phillips on this item.
Okay, come forward. Name and address for the record, and if you've been sworn.
Hello, my name is Valerie Phillips, and I'll be speaking for my son, Christopher Phillips. And he lives at, you want to state your address?
Yeah, my address is 7837 Blair Drive, West Chappaqua, Florida.
And last time, you didn't get the, and we were sworn in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think that Joanna has our videos. The first one, I'm standing in front of the proposed property and facing north towards the school, Hernando Pasco Community Arts. That's the I-75, new on and off ramps going in on Overpass Road. And as you can see, there's a lot of traffic. I talked to the school board. They said the high school has 47 school buses, and the middle school has probably about 38. Transportation for the school board said they had planned on starting school and finishing school about the same time. However, if they did that, they measured the buses, and it would go all the way back to I-75. So they had to stagger their start times and the finish times. Also, on this piece of property, I thought that these hearings were supposed to be posted. Now, I live on Tindall and Curly, and I face the Upperson Ranch, and I've seen those postings for public hearings. This, still to date, has never been posted, not for Planning Commission, not for these meetings, for nothing. I drive by there on my way here. Nothing telling anybody that this meeting is today. Now, this is me driving south towards 54, more construction, and this is headed south, just south of the property and south of the industrial parkway, right before you get to the intersection, before you get to Life Church. And there's dump trucks pulling in and out, school buses, tons of cars, traffic backing up. Now, the thing about this is, is, you know, I don't have a problem with progress. Look at the Upperson Ranch and what's coming in front of me. My road's going to be closed for two months. They started paving it today. But with this, Blair Drive always came out on Overpass Road, and it was a private road, just for Williams Acres. Now, the county bought up a piece of land from the old wasteland property, and they put the exit in right there, in the entrance. Well, in the planning commissioner, the builder in Life Church, said we had two entrances and two exits. And then in the meeting over in Newport, Richey, that we postponed till today, they said they have one entrance, one exit, and one emergency exit. Well, if you've got the property here, 75 on and off ramps here, Blair Drive, the industrial park, my son's home and the community behind him, the only way they got to go is right up in that video, right there. So, I mean, where is their access?
That's why I asked them when they come back up.
Yeah, I'd like for that to do. And then another thing you just brought up is the quality of the homes in there. Yeah, that's 81.8 acres. I mean, 41.8 acres. And they want to put how many homes in? 122 homes in there, parks, sidewalks? How many homes per acre are they going to put in there?
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I know you're going to ask, but I don't think there's anybody else here to speak. Can we ask the applicant to tell us where the ingress egresses will be?
She can come in.
And we can see on a map?
She needs to refer to that?
Yes, thank you, Chairman, board members. If we have a map, we can show, if you, in the write-up, it's explained right now. We don't really know where the emergency access is going to go, if it's going to go. We're going to have one emergency access. You can see there's two proposed on the south end, but when the site's actually designed and civil engineered, they're going to choose which access is going to work. And I think some of it has to do with the timing of the road improvements and those kinds of things. Or we have the option under the Land Development Code to just do the extra lane at the entrance, which may also be an option, and we may go that way. So to answer the question, once it's engineered, we're going to have one access and potentially one other emergency access or a lane at the access entrance off Old Pasco, so.
Okay.
But we will comply with the Land Development Code.
Shelley, can you address the notice issue, since they made an allegation that you didn't post the property?
Staff handled all of that, all the noticing on this one. Oh, I'm sorry, Allen and them did, okay. Well, on the last couple, staff handled it.
Whoever did post the notice could get them to confirm they did that.
Okay, I'll let them handle it then, because the engineering firm handled it then.
And ma'am, just to confirm, your name is Justina Gale?
Allen, Justina.
Don't leave yet.
Okay, I won't.
Just, can I, Mr. Chairman, can I continue my question on the access?
I'll go ahead.
Okay, so you're basically saying is, once you do submit your site plan, is when we will see where the ingress egresses, ingress and egress will be, or multiple ingress egress will be to the property?
Yes, once we go through civil engineering design. So they have proposals of where it may go, if there is a separate emergency access. You can see that in our plan if it comes up. But it's either going to be one of those, or it's going to be an extra lane at the entrance.
Okay, and I'm sorry, let's go back. So the main entrance is on Old Pasco Road?
Yeah.
The main entrance is on Old Pasco Road. Okay, we just, okay. Just, let me, give me a second to read this. Okay, just run it away here. So what's this, tell me about this future Blair Drive. Is that a vision road for the county?
It's actually not a vision road.
No?
When they constructed, when they're constructing the Overpass interchange, they're making Overpass limited access. So those residents who live there now will not be able to have a direct connection to Overpass Road. So they're going to be accessing through Blair Drive to get out to, to Old Pasco Road.
These residents?
Not these residents.
Yeah.
Talking about the existing residents who live there off of Overpass Road now.
Okay.
So the county is actually, county and/or FDOT, and project management may want to weigh in if I say anything incorrectly, is constructing another way out for those residents to get to Old Pasco Roads, as they won't be able to get to Overpass. That road is Blair Drive. And I think what Shelley's saying is that assuming Blair Drive is there, they may make that their emergency access instead.
Correct.
But that's emergency access that's required under our code that states, in case there is, just, this is for the resident's sakes, correct me if I'm wrong, David or the team, under code, that's required to have that emergency access for, quote, emergency vehicles. Let's say there was a backup, or there was an emergency on Old Pasco Road, and people could not get in and out of the community, so it would not be used on a daily basis by any means.
Correct. It's rarely used.
Okay. So it won't block your guys, you can't talk from the audience, just so you know, but it won't not block you, it won't pile up on Blair, so you guys can't get in and out. Okay? Just want to make sure they understood that.
Okay, and so, so I see on this map Blair Drive will be at the bottom of the new properties?
Yeah, it's at the south end.
Okay. And the residents know that? They know that that'd be their in and out?
They see the concept plan, it's my understanding, yeah, from the various meetings. I kind of got pulled in a little bit late on this one.
So, Mr. Chairman, just. So, and then Overpass, whether this development came or not, those homes would still not be able to access Overpass. That would be closed off.
Correct. That wasn't caused by this development, it was caused by the interchange at Overpass.
Right, right. I just want to make sure they have all the information. And then one more thing for the folks that came to speak today. After this process, there is site plan submittal, and if any neighboring resident sees something that they feel does not follow the Land Development Code, they have the ability to appeal the site plan during that process. I'm sure staff, they can raise their hands, whoever's going to be working on this, if you could raise your hand for the citizens, somebody, there we go. Get their information, and during the process, she can notice you when their site plan's submittal, and if you see something in the site plan, again, you feel does not meet and does not follow the Land Development Code, you can appeal that, okay? Just want to make sure we're on the same page. All right, that's it for me.
All right. Okay, so I just need somebody to confirm that the site was posted.
I'll confirm, I saw the site. Michael Dady with KB Home, 19810 Morton Bless Drive, Leeds, Florida.
And have you been sworn?
I have been sworn.
Great, thank you.
And I saw the yellow sign out there. I did not post it. The engineer's office posted it. Get confirmation from them. If I could just briefly address Overpass Road, that video that we saw, it's going to be a totally wonderful situation once the roadway is improved, and this project is dedicating significant right-of-way to make sure that that happens, and an additional right-of-way for a right-hand turn onto Overpass. So hopefully, the residents are going to enjoy these improvements in addition to the overall project. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Justina Gale, 200 Pine Winds Boulevard, Oldsmar, Florida. And the proposed site was advertised, we did mailings and posted, but it was continued a few times, numerous times, because of negotiations with the right-of-way and so forth. So it was a little while ago, but we'll get, but I'm confirming.
It was posted at one point with the original hearing day?
Yes. And this was continued numerous times because we had negotiations with the right-of-way and so forth, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak to this item?
I think we're good, then I'll move for approval. I think we satisfied what we need.
Please, your board?
So I just want to make sure of the motion.
With the, as amended?
So with the 1.2 acres of neighborhood park.
Trees.
With no fence unless it's required by the Land Development Code, and Commissioner Starkey's tree condition.
That's inclusive. And the applicant agrees, and the applicant agrees with all that?
Okay.
Okay, that's the motion.
Go with the second. Okay, I got a motion or a second, my roll call vote.
District two, Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
District three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District four, Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
District five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District one, Chairman Oakley.
Aye, motion passed five-zero. Okay?
Cool.
We will, that's the end of the public hearing, and we will move back to Old Business. And I believe, Mr. Fitzpatrick, you're up.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to thank all of Pasco County for coming together with the great job that Commissioner Starkey and I hosted at Stuckey Marcy. We collect over four thousand items for Sunco Toys. Sunco Toys provides services and items to keep children with their families or assist the foster families in care. This, for our youth and also around the next, there's some others, of the projects.
There's a crib off to the right.
I need your presence?
There's a crib off to the right, you can't see it in those pictures. Here's Lane. You wanna say who this is?
This is Lane Nelson with, um, sorry, the village. I can hear.
We're waiting on you.
Oh, I bet you want, do you wanna talk more about Lane Nelson?
No, no, I just want, I didn't know if you could see the picture. Go ahead, you got the floor.
Yes, thank you, okay. I'd also like to welcome Austin and Village, and to thank Saint Mississauga for creating a favorable permanent housing for Pasco County residents with Rock River here. We're also able to attend Baymark Solutions and, being forefront, Baymark Solutions can better assist the medical community with improved technologies right here in Pasco County. So, it's great to have additional businesses coming to Pasco. Of course, I'll track with Sam and Richard. I'll root, just thank Investigation Station for coming together with many other community members raising funds. I remember back in 2018 going out and participating at the events. So, I'm really proud and excited to announce the new splash cap at Fenton Memorial Park. I would really like to see more splash cars, splash caps around Pasco County to create more positive activities, work children and parents in the nation, and create loving memories and strengthening their family bonds. I'd also thank long-term veterans for their service in remembrance of May and Honor of Peace Officers Day, and of course, Memorial Day, Betches Pass. May fifteenth is also Learn to Swim Day, and I strongly urge every child to learn how to swim. Drowning is one leading cause of death in children under the age of five in Florida. Lastly, I would like to make a motion. I know a few of us had met with Courtney Burgess and Scott Scotty, but it was regarding towing. And I would like to make a motion to have the county attorney prepare a resolution amending the resolution zero-seven dash one-six-nine on the maximum rates for non-consensual towing to increase the following rates to one-fifty for the connection fee and six dollars per mile, and to remove the consumer price index escalator.
So, Mr. Chair, can I respond?
Yes, sir.
We can certainly amend the resolution, but there's thirty-one different fees in that resolution. And Commissioner Fitzpatrick mentioned two of them. So, I'm not clear whether you only want us to amend just those two, or did you want staff to look at making the rates, all of the fees competitive with surrounding jurisdictions? The reason I say that is because if you raise the base rate for Class A to a hundred and fifty, well, there's also a rate for Class B, which already is a hundred and fifty. And there's a rate for Class C, which is two-fifty. And so, I'm not, I'm not clear what you want us to do, what you want us to do with the other twenty-nine fees that are in the schedule.
I'm sorry, who's speaking?
This is David Goldstein, county attorney's office.
Um, I know it was only potentially just addressing a couple of fees, but we can definitely look at all of them, make sure they're competitive with surrounding counties, especially the non-consensual rates.
So, Mr. Chair, oh, Madam Chair? Commissioner Starkey.
Oh, yes.
Madam Chair?
Oh, Dan's for me.
No, you can't speak.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick, I'm, I'll, tell me if you agree to this, okay? I'm gonna amend your motion, okay? Base rate one-twenty to one-fifty, inside stores twenty-five to forty, outside stores twenty to thirty-five, village rate three to five, alary rate ninety to one-hundred, extra man forty to fifty.
What, what are you guys talking about?
Um, I had the village with six, or one-point to fifty, and then the village was about, three hours to six hours.
Wait, what are you guys talking about? I was reading a report.
I'm, I'm with Courtney Burgess, as well as Scotty. And we were talking about the connection fees for towing and.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah, those need to be readdressed.
So, again, we don't have an issue with raising them, but even Commissioner Moore's motion only deals with the Class A fees, doesn't deal with, what do you want us to do about Class B and Class C? I mean, it may be just.
I apologize, I spoke to Jeff, the county attorney, Jeff Spenceiner.
Yes.
He was on the book today. So, he was permitting my motion.
He is, and I've discussed it with him, but I think even he would probably recommend that you just have staff look at redoing all of the rates to be competitive with surrounding jurisdictions, rather than just pick. My concern is if you just pick one or two, then it's gonna make the other ones kind of out of whack with the few that you changed. So, I think it would be easier if you just directed staff to come back with revised rates that are, that are competitive with surrounding jurisdictions.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to revise the rates to be competitive with surrounding jurisdictions.
I think you need, I think you need your motion to direct staff to look at it and bring it back to us, and then we'll, we'll do a vote at that time.
Yeah, is that your motion?
Second.
I would, yes.
Okay.
I would move the draft down to upgrade the.
It's done.
Just done.
And bring it back to.
Okay, that's perfect.
And it's my understanding you wanna remove the consumer price index adjustment also, correct? Okay.
I got a motion and a second, all those in favor, roll call vote.
District two, Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
District three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District four, Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
District five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District one, Chairman Oakley.
Aye, motion passed five-zero, okay? That's all you have?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, wait, lastly, I would like to congratulate all the graduates of Class of two thousand twenty-one. Yes, that's it.
Okay. Commissioner Mariano?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today, we heard from Westport Boat Club President John Wilder about the channels. I don't know if you still have those pictures up there, but I really need to show them again. But it did show how narrow, shallow, and how much prop scar was going on out there. So, we'll be working on that to add that info later on. I'm gonna take a closer look at sea pines in the future, which, by the way, let me put a shout-out for Mike Harbeller and his team up there. They had done a septic sewer project study that is now gonna be something we're gonna be able, looks to submit to the state, who's just put a lot of money towards septic sewer programs for the environment. In addition to that, next week, we're gonna see an item, on the June twenty-second meeting, we're gonna see an item where Sea Pines is gonna buy that last piece of property we needed to fix a major part of the drainage issue, getting it out to Old Dixie with the new development that was coming in a couple of months ago. Connecting to that with the two other processes we bought two months ago, that area up there is gonna be in so much better shape for drainage. And I'll tell, another good shout-out from Mike and his team on Tower Drive in Hudson, which is across from Casperio Chevrolet, tends to flood out continually. That first section there, about, I wanna say, six or seven months ago, we took a look at it. They tried to rush it through swift mud, rush it through engineering, and they're gonna stop measuring now what's in the right-of-way, what we need to fix, and actually get that drainage thing fixed, which will help that area tremendously. So, Mike, thanks for all you're doing with all your team on that. I also like to say that our traffic team did a great job on the Beaker Woods Rotary. People love that Rotary. They can get in, they can get out, they travel into Walmart and out of Walmart without having to touch nineteen. The Country Club Estates Edition that was done by Walmart makes it so easy for all those two-hundred, three-hundred homes to go back and forth without touching nineteen. And the light is flashing as of yesterday, I think it's probably gonna be working any day now, just letting people know. So, the safety for Leisure Beach and everybody in the whole area has been phenomenal.
Do you remember, do you remember when they wanted to come in, that that neighborhood fought against connecting it? I just want that to be a lesson for everybody here, is that neighborhood was insisted, 'cause our planners wanted to connect it from the beginning, and they insisted that it not be connected.
And Commissioner, before myself and even the previous board, the conditions in that connection from Country Club Estates was prohibited from the previous code that was written in that had to be changed. Walmart wouldn't allow the change to happen until the access is granted on the other side, and a light was put out there so people would not cut through to get there. So, you're absolutely right, connectivity is important from the get-go, and I know we're doing a great job on that. I would like to say I am still having a major problem in the area with homeless doing the panhandling in the right-of-way. Call them trespassers, call them what you want. On Beaker Woods Drive, and Dan, if we could, we need to get with Walmart or whatever, they were gonna do some vegetation trimming along the way. Something kept that from happening, but I've got pictures of a, like a beach cart, loaded with stuff, trash, and you look in the canal, there's all sorts of trash. And those people come in, come out, come in, come out, living under that whole thing. It needs to be cleaned out so you don't have the shelter to stay under there. It's just not the right place to be, and it just creates a nuisance for us. And again, State Road fifty-two and nineteen as well, they're just having, over and over, with, you know, trespassers, panhandlers out there, they're just bringing down, I get calls on it continually, so I know we can keep on working that. On a great note, Smile Faith ran a great event, great for awareness, great for fundraising. I think they raised, I think it was fifty grand on a, an event at Guild Dogs down in Port Ritchie. Phenomenal turnout, and Tricia Sowers, who's one of the nurses down there, she says they've actually got a connection for Lynyrd Skynyrd, one of those tribute bands, I guess, to come in. And we talked about putting up, an event up at SunWest. So, I think if we took a look at SunWest a little bit closer, and I'll bring an item back to the board later on. But if we get a charity that's doing so much for our veterans, I mean, ninety-five percent of our veterans do not get dental coverage. Smile Faith is doing it for these people for nothing. And they've got some great help, they've actually got a school that's going in there. The work they're doing is incredible. So, I wanna try to make sure we help groups like that when they wanna come in to use our assets that we have, that will still help parks make a lot of money. The Hudson Splash Bad Celebration Station did a phenomenal job, bringing it all together. And I've got one other thing, if I could put the picture of Hudson Beach up there? Perfect, all right, so there's Hudson Beach. I think that picture's around nineteen-seventy-five or nineteen-seventy-eight. So, you see we've got beach all the way around there? We had submitted to DEP to go restore that. Now, back in two thousand four, before I was elected, PBSNJ had done a study on that area and thought we should restore that beach. The reason they didn't wanna restore the beach was because they didn't want the sand going into the canal, so we fought it. Only a resident, I think I mentioned this about a year ago to the board, that a resident came to me, said if we put a footer around it, like we did SunWest, we can restore the beach at the same time, protect the sand from going in. So, I actually reached out to Senator Simpson, I'm gonna pursue with him about trying to have DEP consider this again, because I think it still would be a great asset for us coming forward to add that beach. And every resident I've talked to loves the idea, so that'll be something that's coming up. And that's all I have, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Bowles?
Just wanna remind you, if you forgot, PCPT is celebrating twenty-five years in business this month. So, they've been running buses now for twenty-five years, or the county's been running buses in PCPT for twenty-five years. So, that's all I have.
That's it?
That's it. I mean, it's almost four o'clock.
Oh, yeah.
I'll give you plenty of time.
Right. Mr. Goesting?
I have nothing further, and thank you for having me here today.
Well, to say I appreciate you being here today and appreciate your advice. And, you know, you're welcome to sit in anytime, as long as Jeff allows you to, so.
Thank you.
So, it was great. Madam Park?
Oh, I'm sorry. So, Commissioner Mariano just reminded me something. So, our office did you a memo about the short-term rental ordinance. And did all of you provide a copy of that memo?
Yes, I read it, and it's a lot of legal.
Right, so the short version is that if you repeal your short-term rental ordinance, the only thing that you can continue to regulate would be licensing and registration-type requirements. In other words, you would not be able to prohibit short-term rentals anywhere in the county if you repealed the ordinance. And the state statute, basically, grandfathers are existing ordinance, and doesn't allow us to re-regulate short-term rentals, again, except for things like licensing and registration. So, the risk of you repealing it is we can't really put in a new regulatory scheme in place unless it's limited to things like licensing and registration.
Are there rules that we can put in place to be a licensed, the RBO or whatever?
There are some health-safety type rules you can put in, but you can't put in rules that regulate the duration of the stay, for example.
What about nuisance, like complaints of roundness, X amount?
Well, I think other nuisance, we might be able to regulate through other provisions of our code that have nothing to do with short-term rentals. Your short-term rental ordinance is really regulating the duration of stays for rent, for rent. That's what it's, it's not really dealing with the nuisance effects. But if you're gonna be discussing this at a workshop, we can go into more details. I wasn't sure if you, it sounded like earlier you were requesting a workshop, and if so, we can get into the weeds of this, if you want to, but.
As Mr. Bowles said, his practice needs to speak for itself.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll say, I'll talk to the commissioner at the break, and I think what we would do is schedule a regular item for this board discussion. That way, they can give us motion direction at it if it's not too important, when we're ready to, both your office and in our office in the planning side.
Okay, but I think staff's gonna probably have to give you some data on how extensive the short-term rental problem is in Pasco, which we don't have. We can give you the legal analysis, but we don't have the facts about how big of an issue it is.
And we can, we can get that information along with the amount of, you know, development tax we actually collect from short-term rentals that may or may not be permitted in Pasco.
So, you know, it's interesting that apparently we may be collecting money from our short-term rental. We are collecting money from something that we outlaw. So, I think we could easily be challenged in court. And there's very selective enforcement, so there's just a lot of issues. 'Cause we have hundreds of them, hundreds, thousands, probably.
Yeah, the issues, the issues are not, they're somewhat related, but not directly related in the sense that one's a taxation issue, one's a land use issue. And so, I can't really blame the ones that are operating illegally from a land use perspective from not wanting to violate the tax law, 'cause then they'd be violating two different laws. So, it's probably helpful that they're at least complying with one of the laws.
I don't know, I don't know how you get to pick and choose which law you get to follow.
But, and I believe the tax, I believe, I believe the tax collector does the enforcement of that tax, correct? So, it's not our code enforcement department.
To a certain extent, the actual websites do some compliance requirements on the tax piece.
Okay. So, we just need to talk about it?
So, it sounds like this will be a future agenda item, is that okay with you?
July?
Yeah, I think that's right.
August?
We need to address, but we have one more question.
July or August?
Mr. Chairman, maybe look at August, 'cause I think we only have one meeting in July, that's gonna be a duty. Correct, correct.
Okay. Madam Court?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just wanna provide a public service announcement. We had two customers come to my office last week, and they were scammed. Very aggressive individuals called and say that they have, did not show up to jury service, and that there's a warrant out for their arrest, and they can pay a fine in lieu of being arrested. And they must be very aggressive and convincing, because the individuals are instructed to go and purchase gift cards, scratch off, give them the code in the back to give a card.
They fall for that crap.
And one customer was out two thousand dollars, another customer was out like fifteen hundred dollars. And it's very heartbreaking when you see them, they're just good people that got scammed by an aggressive caller. We've put the information also on the front page of our website, but I thought since I'm here and we're in the public realm, that I would also make those comments, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I thank you solidly, I wanna be thankful to the administrator and his staff, and all of us, all of our staff. Thank you, David Goesting, for being here today and offering your advice for us, and I think it was very helpful. And I appreciate all the commissioners having the same outlook of the county looking better in the future with the developments we're gonna get, with landscaping, architectural, and the fact that we care about our county and we care what it looks like in the future. So, I think, I think now we'll. and we care what it looks like in the future, so I think, I think now we'll keep that force on and do the right thing, and we'll be a better county for it. If we're gonna be a premier county, we need to have that, so, and we also need to look at things like, Mr. Starkey did say, affordable housing and those effects, we don't have a lot of that coming before us, but we definitely need, we got forty percent of our population need workforce housing, and we'll make, we gotta make a place for some of that, we gotta have it, so. Okay, with that, I say, where are you?